Good morning, everybody. Welcome. We're here today for the Committee of the Whole meeting for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I'd like to call the meeting to order at nine thirty A M. Councillors, you have the agenda in front of you. I guess anybody has any additions to the agenda? Big one, so any would be a motion to approve the agenda? Counselor Keller, be all in favor? Close, which carries. We have the minutes of maybe the whole meeting from January twenty-third in front of us. They're not yet approved, but I think we approve them at the next council meeting. Is there any business arising from those minutes? Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. There are a couple of references to meetings that were going to be held afterwards. Is there an update that we could, that's good for council to know about the Atco meeting that occurred?
Yeah. CEO will give the update on.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, the mayor, the director of operations, and I attended a meeting with Atco. It was pretty general in nature. They had intended to introduce a new employee who has responsibility for the region. That employee wasn't able to show up. And so we had a general discussion about Atco coming to a future council meeting to provide an information update on some of their activities over the last little while, as well as some of their certain more recent activities that are underway in the region. People may notice them replacing meters. They gave us a bit of a heads up about that, and they also discussed providing council some information about streetlight conversion. That was, I would say, pretty minor.
Thank you for that. I am just to comment regarding the replacement of the meters. The replacement of the meters was happening where people weren't, I don't know if they were advised, and all of a sudden the power would go out in their house because somebody was replacing their meter. So, you know, it may be not the best processes, and maybe we should follow up with Atco, that when they're doing the replacements, at least a knock on the door or advising someone that they're replacing the meter, the power's going to go into your home? Because if you're working on a document where you have something going on and you lose power, you may lose three or four hours' work. So I think we might want to follow up with Atco regarding their processes when they're doing this, maybe one in ten year replacement at our community.
Counselor Wilson, for Counselor Malik, certainly administration can provide that feedback at the time, and Atco mentioned that they had provided information through the local media, and I can speak personally to having had somebody knock on my door. So maybe what you've seen or have been hearing from constituents is an inconsistency in their approach. But I can certainly from my experience say that that was exactly what happened. Somebody knocked on our door and said, we're going to be repaid for the meter. You expect the power to go for approximately this long, and then we'll come back out. So maybe that was a bit of an inconsistency, but we can certainly pass on that message to Atco.
No, no, and they do great service for our community, and it just was a matter that was brought up to me, so I need wanted to bring it up. The last item, if I may, regarding the update on any meetings. We had a resort status meeting as well, that if there's anything that's appropriate to come to council, if that would be an update for us as well.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond. It's like a long time ago, Monday, two weeks ago, I think we had that last meeting. Still inconclusive. We were discussing whether we could get anything prepared in time for a budget submission for this year. That just became impractical, so we have nothing. Now, we have two new players at the table, Silicon Lake and Drumheller, both of whom have MLAs who are in cabinet, and there's going to be some outreach by them to see whether we can get some alignment. That was basically the nature of the discussion of all. Most of the communities were also represented at the recent Tourism Industry Association Summit. And so we discuss talking points for that particular venue. And with the exception of Canmore, which at last minute wasn't able to attend, the other communities were all there and circulating within the industry to project a better understanding of the challenges that we face as tourism-based communities. Well, some of us fully dependent on tourism, others not so much. So it's still a work in progress, I would say, and still trying to come up with a strategic plan to implement to see whether we convince government to move forward on both the designation issue and funding of some sort. And interestingly, at the Tourism Industry Association Summit, there were, from my perspective at least, some concerning elements of that provincial strategy appears to be focused more on developing a new product outside of the core communities, but they are now called legacy communities. So it's something that we'll have to discuss further to see how we can actually impact that decision to make investments of new tourism product that doesn't include the legacy destinants.
Thank you, Yourship, and thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, councillor. Anything further regarding business arising from the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting from January twenty-third? There's nothing. We'll move on to delegations. And today we have the Crisis Team Jasper Society here, and we have Lisa Dara, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but we could pass it off to Lisa and, or to yourself, sorry, please introduce yourself.
My name is Hannah Bass, so I'm the secretary of the Crisis Team.
Okay, thank you. Nice to meet you. Yeah, Lisa.
Thanks, Scott. I mean, yeah, thank you for having us again, the Crisis Team Jasper. Typically, it'd be Kelly Dawson sitting in this chair as our president of the society. However, she's working with the department today, so was unable to attend. I'll be here on her behalf with her. So just to keep it brief, we did send a comprehensive briefing package to you for review. And I apologize, there was a couple of dates that are error on the top of the page, November seventh, twenty twenty-four should be February seventh, twenty twenty-four. You might have noticed. That's just a quick correction. We are hoping today to ask council to release the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three funds that were allocated for crisis response to the Crisis Team Jasper Society, based on the report that I gave that showcased the outcomes that were achieved in those years past. I did decide to report on the F one oh four format for those two years. I believe council has not seen a report from the Crisis Team since twenty twenty-one. And our hope today is that you've now received this, and this will help showcase the outcomes that we did achieve and how we got there, and if there are any changes that we had in our, our model, moving from advocates to support workers, and why we did that. And so today, we're just here to ask if you have any questions from that document, and then briefly touch on the RMA document from the Rural Municipalities of Alberta document that I added in just to give council a heads up on what's coming down the pipe from the provincial government with regards to victim services in rural communities in Alberta. Did anyone have any questions on the document?
Thank you. Councillors, questions for Mrs. Dara?
I know it's quite an extensive document that we did submit, and the F one oh four for twenty twenty-four, I know it states in here that it's included, but we haven't come to a general consensus yet with administration on that document. So the Crisis Team has revamped it according to what we believe we can provide for the twelve thousand five hundred for twenty twenty-four, and we have submitted it to administration. So it's, I think it's just a matter of time that we'll hear back, and we can have conversations regarding that. And hopefully sign that, and then council will be privy to the outcomes that we've stated that we would achieve for twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so I think the last time we were discussing Crisis Team, unfortunately, you guys weren't here. There were some questions, I think, around the table, but that was regarding the contract that you've yet to engage in. So I'm, but, but you guys are here. If councillors have any questions regarding that contract, I'm sure you'd be able to answer those as well.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that document can sadly be recreated. We will work together with administration to come up with a general consensus on what that'll look like. Today, I was hoping that we could get some resolution on the, the funds from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. What I really wanted to showcase was that the work was done, and we did produce and fulfill our, our end of the bargain with the contract. And so we're hopeful that from the reporting that I've submitted, that you'll be able to extrapolate the outcomes out of there that satisfy the funding requirements that were stated on the F one oh fours, that we did achieve them for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and the funds that we've been paying our operational costs from are from our capital budget. So that was from the thirty thousand dollars that we transferred over to the JCTS to pay for our expenses, basically. So we've depleted those, and so we really hope to replenish that. We still have a lot of outstanding money that's being held. Our name has officially changed legally, and we're just hopeful to start replenishing some of our funds. You can see from our budget that I submitted that we will quickly go into a deficit if we're not successful in achieving grants and other funds. We will no longer get the funds from the victims of crime because we're not based out of the RCMP detachment. And what you can see from this report is that I just received that Rural Municipalities of Alberta report in my hands just about eight days ago, and it really helped me come to a conclusion on why this has all occurred. So Jasper Victim Services Society, who is us, the reason that we're no longer based out of the detachment wasn't just specific to us. We can see that that's what's going to be happening across the province. And so that's significant, and that there will likely be a, a, there's going to be a big change in service provision. Nobody knows exactly what's that going to be, that's going to be. It's going to roll out starting April first, and it should be wrapped up according to the provincial government by September thirty-first. So we can predict that Bo Valley Victim Services Society and Hinton Support Services Society will be in the exact same position that we were in a few months ago. The reason we experienced it sooner was because there was an opportunity with the turnover of staff, and I couldn't quite come to the conclusion on why that happened until reading the report. And now I can see that we were just the first person to experience this. When I met with Hinton Support Services, who are now providing service to Jasper, so that's what the victim services individual that's working for Jasper now, two days a week, you can already see a decrease in service. It's two days a week rather than full-time. And I thought that might have been just for the interim, but now after reading the report and speaking to those other agencies, like Peter Quinn from Bo Valley Victim Services, he's prepared to be finished his career with the nonprofit as of September thirtieth because they're no longer going to be based on the RCP detachment. So that really renders them dysfunctional when you don't have the referral source, which is what happened with us. So we were just the first to experience it. They're very interested in our model and how we have continued on, and they're hopeful that maybe we can all combine efforts and work together to create, especially Hinton Support Services Society, to maybe start working together to ensure that, you know, residents and visitors are supported in times of crisis. I really feel there's going to be a de, a significant decrease in service, and the Crisis Team will obviously will be here, and we're, we're ready to ebb and flow and see how that's all going to look. But again, nobody has any idea what it's going to look like starting April first.
Councillors? Questions, motions? Sorry, Counselor Malik?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and welcome, Ms. Dara. I have a couple of questions. One is in the RMA document, it talked about hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding for rural victim service units. Would that be, would that funding be available to this community along with Hinton, along with Grand Cash and so on, who have VSUs?
Surprisingly, before I realized that this was coming down the pipe, there was a funding that was available in October, November that I saw, and I was a bit perplexed at why it was coming from the Solicitor General's Office. But regardless, I applied, and that was four hundred thousand, and that's what I'm waiting to hear on. Now I see why it was there. It was in preparation for this. So my guess is there will be funding from the provincial government that will go out to agencies that are now separated, the nonprofits that have now moved out of the detachment. And my guess is they would like service provision to be provided by an external source. So we have applied for that. It's in the works. I, it's strangely, it's been this long, we haven't heard anything, except after reading that RMA document, my guess is they'll roll it out all at once. So April first, we'll get the yay or nay if we receive the funding. And Richard Daisy did give us a letter of support, and that was significant to ensure our credibility for that funding, so I'm really hopeful.
If I may, thank you for that. I also noted in the RMA report that there's, the provincial government is still expecting the VSUs, if I'm using the, yes, VSUs, to continue doing private fundraising as well to support the operation of these various services throughout the province, even after they roll it into a zone scenario where we'll be part of a much larger zone.
That's correct. So, I mean, Crisis Team will be still its own entity, and all those nonprofits will now be their own entities. So they may have, from what I'm learning, is like, for example, Bo Valley Victim Services and Canmore, Banff and that whole entire region, they had also a base in Airdrie. And the thought is that RCP officers will be giving a one eight hundred number to their victims of crime rather than a face-to-face support. And I've been told that volunteers will be very minimal. So that would say to me that not using volunteer advocates would mean there might be people working at these head offices that will supply services to large regions. So Crisis Team, and if Bo Valley Victim Services decides to stay its own entity and keep running outside of the detachment to provide service, we're not sure if they will continue, and then those agencies will be able to apply for funding, and they're able to fundraise. But the workers that will be under the detachment will be working for the detachment, and they won't be able to fundraise. So it would just be, so it would be societies like ours.
And just to make this go full circle, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the government, local fundraising, if we choose to, or would probably be to, and then the contribution from the council or from the municipality, all that stays within Jasper. None of it is shared outside our specific region, just so that, you know, following the money, where's it going, where's it coming from?
That's correct. And thankfully, the foresight of Jasper, Jasper, Jasper Victim Services Society, board directors and the contractor at the time in twenty twenty-one, they had an inclination, something like this was going to start evolving, and so that's why. Oh, so that's why they decided to keep the funds raised in, in a separate Crisis Team line item in society was to protect it, so it stayed in our community. And now we've been, you know, working off those funds that are depleting slowly. We definitely need to revitalize some of our financials. As you can see, we're, right now, the only income we're receiving is from our cauldron. And then hopefully, the grants, the provincial grants that will, will be accessible to us, will be successful in some of those grants, which I really believe we will, because, because we experienced this sooner than everybody else, we're actually ahead of the game. We've applied for that grant in November, where, you know, Hinton Sports Services and Bo Valley Victim Services haven't, and it's closed. So we, it was almost fort, like, it was fortunate of us to have gone through this struggle in not being a part of the detachment anymore and not having office space there, because now we're, we're ahead. And we're still rolling. It's, it's fantastic.
Thank you for that.
Your election.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you too, Ms. Dara. Thank you for, for your attendance, and thank you for that RMA report. It's new to you, it's new to me. I will tell you that there, we are a member of Alberta municipalities, so more urban than, than rural. We don't attend the RMA. But I can tell you that in the fall of two thousand and two, Canmore brought forward a motion at Alberta municipalities, very similar to the recommendations and the report from RMA. So both urban and rural municipalities in the province have recognized for a number of years the challenges with this provincial change. And so if you're interested in that Canmore document, I can make sure I get that to you. It's not as extensive as the RMA one, but it covers essentially the same points. Sure. Just to let you know, you have support at a very broad spectrum of municipalities across the province who see the challenges. So thank you for stepping in and doing what you can locally. I'm interested in where you stand or where the Crisis Team stands with respect to motions that were presented to Committee of the Whole on January twenty-third. So at that time, maybe on your behalf, it sort of appeared that way, our administration brought forward a couple of matters. There were two motions for a committee to make recommendations to council, and we haven't had a council meeting yet, so we haven't perfected those. Before that happens, I would like to hear from Crisis Team where you stand on those two motions. So one of them, I think it was combined funding for two years to just allot that once the F one oh four is signed off. That motion was defeated. The other motion was with respect to one year's funding for training for advocates, I think, I forgot it backwards, Mr. Givens?
Sure, Your Worship. Yeah, I think it's probably helpful to everybody, just to clarify what happened at that last meeting. So if we look in our minutes, which are not approved formally by council, but certainly that meeting was public, and council will remember that there were two different F one oh fours that were presented. Simplest way that I'll break down, since trying to read isn't here, is one was for the prior year, month, prior years' monies for twenty-five thousand. That one, council did approve that F one oh four, and we essentially framed those, you know, the question is, what would that old money be for? And the administration, the F one oh four, had framed it as to support the implementation of advocate recruitment and training programs. Council approved that F one oh four, or something substantially in that format, allowing administrations some flexibility to work with the group. But essentially, so okay, so for the money from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, go ahead. We'll call that as having been for advocate recruitment and training. The motion that failed was for the new twenty twenty-four dollars, which was framed as being in support of after-hours crisis response. And that's where we didn't have consensus among council to move forward. And I think that there was a desire to hear from the group about what types of terms and conditions or outcomes should be included in that. I think council was interested in hearing from the group. Essentially, to get new money for twenty twenty-four, what outcomes does the group think that they can deliver on? And I think that was the nature of the discussion plus committee. So the, the money from prior years, sorry, I'm doing this sort of shuffle, this sort of, this is, council have given direction on that, go ahead. Generally use a F one oh four that was in the committee last week or a couple of weeks ago. But for new money, there needs to be a discussion about what outcomes and deliverables the municipality would like to see, and the group thinks that they can deliver on.
Thank you for that. So with that correction, the question I was getting to is, when I read your report, it seems to me you are looking more at a professional level of delivery rather than advocates. And so committee has recommended to council that we approve two years of funding but specific to advocates, recruitment and training. Is that, does that align with, with your goals? Because as I, as I've said, you you were looking more at an experiential model rather than an advocacy model. And so if, if we come to that and council approves the expenditure of those funds for advocacy, recruitment and training, does that meet your needs?
Thank you, Bill, for that explanation. Thank you, Bill, for that explanation. That is perfectly how I interpreted it as well. I'm so happy to be able to be here to negotiate this, because, no, that is not exactly how this is going to unfold. And I'm ecstatic to be able to express why, and I think you'll see in my document here, I've talked about the changes. And I wish earlier last year, in those interim check-ins, we weren't a part of those, the Crisis Team wasn't a part of those interim check-ins that happened with administration. Through our partnership, we were being, we were, the advocacy was coming from an organization that we had partnered with. And I will tell you that there is, upon peer review and industry standard and risk management, and a more economical model, because we need to be very economical right now. We have decided to keep the team smaller, paid, and which helps with the risk management portion of it. So on here, I put on this F one oh four, which council hasn't received one for a very long time, and hence why you are probably perplexed on how this is all, where the changes are and why things are a bit confusing. But I'll read it for you. It says, were there any changes planned to the activities? Yes. "A strategic operational decision was made to contract one or two Crisis Team support workers rather than contract a large group of advocates. The reason this decision was made was due to risk management, industry standard and peer review of the new operational functioning. The JVSS, which is the Jasper Victim Services Society, was no longer a police-based service. In the absence of this, a change in operations was necessary to mitigate the potential for risk and/or secondary trauma. What were the results of this activity? Staff have formal education and training, for example, training in crisis response, crisis intervention, emergency services and social work. They're, they are also well-versed in the community resources available in Jasper. The organizational model will move to a small specialized team of Crisis Team support workers who are hired based on years of experience in the field of education. Experience required model rather than a willing-to-train volunteer model." That's the reason that we moved to not a volunteer advocate system, and that's where the training costs decreased. And so we wouldn't be asking for that kind of money for training, because the two people on the team are already very well-trained, and it's just maintenance of that.
All right, well, thank you. That, that really does help inform council for our next regular meeting where that recommendation from the committee will come forward. I think it was for, I think, two years of funding for a specific purpose, but it's not necessarily the purpose that you need.
However, the training, the original F one oh four, the original measurement was based on, I did add it into that F one oh four, they changed over the course of time, those F one oh fours. And so the original request that I added in here in the appendix, you can kind of see that it was for the planning and setup. That was for twenty twenty-two, when we realized what That was for twenty twenty-two, when we realized what was happening. That was for the planning and setup and the one-on-one, which all occurred. And then for twenty twenty-three, we were looking to further bring on, like to build the team, to bring on advocates. Upon the risk management, we decided advocates, volunteer advocates would not be appropriate in this model. So we, we changed that. However, the outcomes remained the same. So the outcomes that we stated to council, which were to have, have you know, people trained for duty and ready to go, that occurred. All the outcomes stayed identical. It was only how we got there and how we achieved them. And that's where we need flexibility in those F one oh fours to be able to ebb and flow within our operations. To micromanage the operations on how we're getting to those outcomes is what's causing this challenge for everybody. We can't be that specific, especially in a time of flux. And I mean, you know, from twenty twenty-one till now, it's been, we had a pandemic, things changed. And, and then this, you know, new way of running victim services across the province. So we've had a lot of hurdles and we've had to ebb and flow with those. And at the same time, we achieved all of the outcomes that were stated. And to me, they're, they are really significant to look at the statistical data that I provided on here. We provided after-hours on-call crisis response services, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The agencies, you know, we supported community outreach services. We've done one-on-one. We've assisted at reception centers for big events like the Chinaman Fire. But I believe for twelve thousand five hundred a year, we really exceeded expectations. And so this thought that we haven't held up our end of the bargain, we really urge you to look at the outcomes of what was achieved rather than how we got there.
Thank you. If I may, one further question. There was discussion, and maybe you watched it, on January twenty-third about the potential for non-alignment between your mandate and the mandate as expressed in the F one oh four. When I see your material today, your mandate seems to me to be pretty broad, as is the mandate in the, in the F one oh four. So your mandate is to support individuals experiencing trauma and tragedy in times of crisis. That could arise from anything when I read that. Of my recollection, and I don't have the documents, but I think the F one oh four has similar, very broad verity. And there was some concern about whether or not there was alignment. Is, is that a concern that you have? Note that the F one oh four has not yet been signed. There might be lots of reasons for that. But is alignment of mandates one of the reasons?
Yes, the mandate on the F one oh four that was created by administration was actually pretty specific and had some specific outcomes within the mandate itself. Our mandate has actually changed. The one you have is the old mandate. So this is our mandate now. The primary mandate of the crisis team is to support individuals experiencing trauma and tragedy in times of crisis. This, the crisis team allows for immediate action to occur by providing logistical support and planning for person in need. Along with this mandate, the organization identifies gaps in crisis intervention and prevention services and implements strategies to fill gaps to increase community resiliency, thereby reducing harm. I guess our feeling is that we should really be putting forth a mandate rather than one be provided to us. And we wanted the opportunity to put our mandate on that F one oh four. And to for us to drive the discussion on what we can provide with what's being given to us. And we feel that we need to be involved in that process from the early stages of that F one oh four. There are portions of that F one oh four that we can clearly see that we might not be able to provide. The domestic violence piece, there's, there were some issues from our board of directors, so therefore we have revamped it. That's now in administration, and all we've done is we will achieve the same outcomes. We just wished for it not to be as specific with the way operations were to be run. We felt that we really needed to keep it outcome-based rather than operational-based on how we are going to, we will achieve that.
And are those discussions continuing with administrations?
I have no doubt that there'll be a connection this week, and I'm sure there'll be some discussion and everyone will come to a consensus. Otherwise, we'll see.
Understood. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I think council.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, and thank you very much, Mr. Stare and his boss over coming today. That your explanation really makes things clear. I have a couple of questions for you. How many advocates do you have now? What's the goal? How many do you want? And the other one was you had mentioned this model makes it more economical. In what, how does it make it more economical?
Great question. For advocates, we will now be calling those support workers. So you won't hear the term advocate coming from us anymore. It'd be support workers that are paid and that, that assists us with all of our risk management and, and insurance, et cetera. So it's very important operationally. We, right now, have two support workers, which is Greg and I. And we have one more person that's trained in the wings that we wish to bring on as soon as we achieve our, some, replenishing some of our funds into our budget. And we'll bring that person on as well. The reason it's more economical is we don't, no longer have a salary that was like a larger salary for the coordinator. And the, that role is also doing the on-call phone service. So basically, we're responding and only getting our wages when we respond. And so, because there can be days and days where there's maybe nothing happening. And then like three days ago, we got three calls from the hospital in one evening. So it's, we're just doing it more economical and, yeah, we're utilizing people who had been volunteers with victim services for many years and that are highly trained and that have day jobs as well. So we just hand off the phone. Day jobs are retired, so we just hand off the phone or self-employed. So we can ebb and flow and wear a few hats. That's what's creating it much more economically. So when you look at eighty-six, we'll have three people on, eighty-six thousand that we've allotted to contractor budgets for, that's including bookkeeping. That would have been our previous year's budgets. That would have been significantly higher, double. It's a pretty economical service when you look at what's provided.
Okay, great. Thank you. So from, I think from the conversation, I, I don't think we need motions today. The, the, the funds that you were requesting, there is a motion that will be on the table next week at council. Yet it might be, need to be modified to add a bit more flexibility to how you can use those funds. And then you're, I guess, still working with administration on future, future years. So we'll
For twenty twenty-four.
So that's, and we'll, we'll see that in front of us when you guys come to improvement. Anything more we need to? All right.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Just to formally acknowledge your presentation, I think that it would be appropriate that there be a motion that committee receive the presentation for the crisis team for information. And it certainly is important information for our next discussion. So I, I make the motion that we formally receive the information today. And thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you for that motion. I'll call the question all in favor. None opposed? Thanks very much for joining us today.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, we're moving on to agenda item six, correspondence. There are a few correspondence. The first one's from Parks Canada. Well, maybe pass it over to you, Mr. Given.
Yeah, your worship and Deputy Mayor Wilson. There are a number of items in correspondence. The first, as you said, is from Parks Canada. There, as you can see, is a request that was forwarded to administration looking for details about a potential service extension to Lee Canyon. At this time, administration doesn't have guidance from council on what conditions would might extend service or add service or change service. As we discussed previously, that's the types of things that would come up in a transit policy. But there is an interest from Parks Canada, as described in their letter. This is here for council's information. Administration would suggest that in appropriate course of action, maybe to refer this to administration for a report back to future committee meeting. We could also provide parks with some addition, you know, some, some basic information about, you know, sort of a generalized cost per hour of service for their planning purposes. But really, administration is looking for erection from council on how you'd like us to deal with this remotely.
Okay, great. Kelly, I'm sure you read the letter. Any questions, comments, direction? Counselor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to the letter. We currently have a contract for a specific service to specific areas. And it's great to see a service extension. I think some of the things that we'll need to consider and just when we can, this is the first, I think, change to our transit coming from one of our partners. One of the things we'll need to consider is, will this require additional when I say infrastructure, do we need another bus? The reason I say that is the current model that we've made, this three-year contract with our service provider was based on the fact that we got a grant for our infrastructure, for our buses. If any sort of service extension, this is just one of them, is to be considered, we'll have to consider that there's a capital cost if we need to acquire additional buses, which there probably will, will not be a grant for. So I just want to make sure that when administration's looking at this, that's one of those things that we make sure we include to so that the burden of doing this extension service isn't passed on to the taxpayers. When I say taxpayers to the residents, I think is a more appropriate way of referring to it. Businesses and residents are all taxpayers and we're talking about, you know, additional cost to the municipality, I guess is a better way to refer to it. So when we look at that, we probably want to do a total cost recovery based on the need for perhaps recapitalization of equipment. And I think that's very important for my second point, which is why I wanted to speak to this, is this might set the precedent for additional requests from some other partners within the community. And I'm specifically thinking of summertime operation up to the tramway and also winter operation up to the ski hill. We may have the same requests come to us. And I think we need to be clear in how we're going to respond to these requests that it needs to be total cost recovery to minimize any additional impact on our limited resources as a municipality. And I throw that out there for discussion and consideration, because we are strapped right now. We are, we are, we are really tight. Additional borrowing is not an option. And anytime we do anything, looking at this extension of services, creating more costs, we need to make sure that we're not adding additional burden to an already stressed budget that's going to be going on for the next five to six years. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank, thank you, Counselor Melnick. Counselors? And then further on the letter from the superintendent, I would entertain a motion suggesting we forward this to administration to feasibility report. All right.
I'm happy to make a motion that committee receive the correspondence from the superintendent for information and refer the matter to administration for a report back in the future committee report.
Thank you for that. I'll call the question all in favor. None opposed? Much curious. Welcome, Counselor Waxer. Okay, second item in correspondence is from Jasper United Church. Excuse me, would you like to speak to this one?
Yes, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. So the essence of this letter is that the United Church has been having some difficulty since the change in the utility rate model. As council knows, back in January of twenty twenty-two, we moved to the triple C model. And essentially, the negative impact on the United Church is that they have two service lines, and so they are the connection and capital charge, both those service lines. That was obviously unexpected to them, and they have very low utilization of water. But when the property was constructed, it was constructed with two service lines. The model is explicit in that it says that there is a capital charge with each service line, and councils have many discussions about how that's calculated. And I think since the change in the model, there's been some confusion both on behalf of administration and the church about sort of exactly how they should be handling that. Administration obviously doesn't have the ability to vary or waive the system that's in place. That would be up to council discussion, and certainly the amount of dollars of sort of waiving the capital charges or ignoring one of the service lines, if I can put it that way, would be outside of, you know, administration's latitude to do that. We don't have that ability to vary the rules once they're put in place. So in essence, the request here from the United Church is that consideration be given to their utility billings being invoiced at the rate of having a single service line under one inch. And so that's, that's the essence of the request. If council wished to do that, that would also, I think, likely raise a question from the church and from administration that council could answer for us about if council was to do that or provide that sort of variance in the application of the model, would council then also intend to waive any previously incurred charges that may be outstanding? I don't have information at hand about what those previously incurred charges that may have been paid, what those add up to, but I would imagine that they may be outside of administration's authority to waive waiver charges, which maxes out above a thousand dollars. So if this is built up over a couple of years, then, then that may be outside of our ability. So this is the first that council, mayor, councillor are seeing of this issue. Administration supports the request from the United Church in that it will be helpful to establish clarity for administration and the church, the great pair in this case, on what approach council would like us to take with respect to this property that does have two service lines, but has a very low consumption of water. And that's the summary of the issue.
Thank you for that. Counselors, questions? Counselor Miller, if you.
Thank you, General G. Mayor Wilson. Just curious, are both lines being?
Yeah, so my understanding, again, it's, my understanding is limited, but you know, there are two properties there. There's the Nats, and then there's the church proper. The hall, the Creed Center. And so each of those, I would imagine, have their own line. Certainly, if council wanted more details about exactly how the service is working there, past utility billings, any amounts outstanding, that would be the type of thing you could refer back to administration for a report back.
Anybody interested in a report? All right.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson through you to Mr. Given. Appreciate the comment that council by a decision could introduce clarity on this particular user. But it seems to me that that will introduce less clarity throughout the system. And so if we are going to deal with this, I think we should deal with it on a principle basis. And what are the principles that would consult council to make a change here? make a change here? Because if we do that as a one-off, we are bound to get other requests. You're just introducing less clarity if we just do this by a series of one-offs. So I would be inclined to make a report from administration looking at a principled way to do this, because surely this cannot be the only property that could come forward and say, well, we've got a bigger line than we ever needed. It wasn't our fault. And we'd like to pay less. So I, I hesitant to to make a motion dealing with the substantive request at this point without requesting some further information, or at least having council engage in a discussion of those principles if if it's not within the realm of administration.
Counselor Keller, you.
We go back to one of our last meetings when we did the utility rate by law. We talked about having a workshop or a discussion on all utilities as we had some presentations from our residents that day. So I think if we built this into that workshop, we could take a look at the principles there as well.
Would you make motion to refer this item to that?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, I agree with Counselor Keller. There certainly was some discussion about the usefulness, as I can say, the utility of utilities workshop, but the usefulness of a potential workshop to discuss a variety of different issues. Council didn't direct or ask administration to organize one. So there isn't, there isn't a forum to refer this to. My suggestion might be a certain point would at least to get more facts about this particular instance and have that returned to council. Council may be able to identify from the facts a principle that might come up that that would deal with this. Or those facts might identify a larger issue that needs to be considered, and at that time, council could, you know, direct administration to organize a workshop around utilities. It's a little bit more third about what the workshop would be about.
I think make motion that council recommend that defer this to administration to bring us back some principles that we can look at on this request. Not to deal with this request.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, just, I would be a bit cautious about asking administration to establish principles on how to deal with this request. Because principle administration might bring forward would be consistency that we should deal with this approach with this property. And so I think this really is getting into what principles would council like to apply to this type of situation or other situations might be out there. So maybe that starting point would be gathering all the specifics of this case and bring them back to council, and we could at that time identify if there are other similar cases that administrations were, again, not making any judgment calls about potential principles, but saying what are the details in this instance? And are there other instances like this across the municipality? And then council could have a look at that ball of information and said, okay, how should we deal with this? So that would be a refer to administration for a report back with additional details on the request and similar situations.
Make that motion.
Everyone understands the motion? All question, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you for that. All opposed? Third item of correspondence from the RCMP and their quarterly reports. Anything to speak to on that, Mr. Given?
No, just to say, this is the regular quarterly reporting from the local detachment. Sergeant Daisy has provided a list of statistical information as well as some of the community engagements that he's undertaken. I suppose council and the public are free to pull out any sort of relevant or high points. For me, one that stood out was that the detachment is continuing to report year-over-year declines decreases in in most of their reportable incidents. And that the detachment is nearly fully staffed. So they have nine established peace officer positions, eight actively sort of filled and working, and then two, what they call soft vacancies, which are positions that are filled but vacant due to a maternity, maternity leave, medical leave, et cetera. And so the detachment appears to be well-staffed. And there are a variety of statistical data available for the community and for council's information.
Do you, any comments? Questions, counselors? Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and I'm going to go around, a roundable way of bringing an item up, not specifically referenced in this report, I mean, a very positive report. But I do note that the Sergeant Bedezy is always remains available to discuss your community identified leasing priorities and any ideas we may have to enhance our service delivery. And that is very important. Our relationship. The reason I bring this up is on the fifth of February, I had an opportunity to attend on Zoom an information session on civilian governance of policing bodies or communities served by the RCMP. And this was through the governor of Alberta, who inviting stakeholders to inform the development of supporting regulations to enable Police Amendment Act that was in twenty twenty-two. And basically, this was to seek information about advisory bodies or advisory boards to communities that are served by the RCMP. And I have a question for administration. Have we had any discussion as such, or is there any? Have we done any work regarding this potential, well, it's not a potential changer, it's going to be the opportunity for policing advisory boards? And again, with the discussion to how we best work with our policing partners?
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Council Malick. So this has been a light discussion with the administration. The opportunity to provide input into the RCMP operations has existed for some time. The province has recently made some changes, and they're considering, you know, how they activate and maybe improve that system. But it should be noted that the municipality actually has a community police advisory committee policy. That's F two, F zero zero two, that was approved in two thousand and eleven. And it identifies that the municipality in partnership with the RCMP detachment still support and maintain the Jasper Community Police Advisory Committee. I don't believe that committee has been active for quite some time, certainly not in my time here in Jasper. And so this, that's been the nature of discussion with administration, saying, as we've done our policy review, this looks like one that we may be out of alignment with. And is worth reviewing, I think, with council and the RCMP detachment commander, especially in light of some of those provincial changes. So yes, there has been a discussion about how we provide input into policing in the community. We do, in fact, have a policy. I would say we're out of alignment with that policy and it's likely time to relook at that and dig into that issue to see how we could either activate the policy well and the changing provincial landscape. Or whether it's something we wish to discuss.
Thank you very much for the for the explanation and that policy was passed after my first term, so I would have no knowledge of it. I didn't stay up at night looking for any specific policy within our our own administration. So I really much thank you for that. And I'm glad I had the opportunity to bring this up. As it will over time here, I think, become something we will need to look at, and we should look at that policy.
Counselors? Counselor Hutton?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm more of comments, but I I'm very happy to read that they're almost fully staffed, and I definitely have felt a increase of happy officer presence downtown, which is really good, and they all seem quite smiley. I always love looking at the community connection section, which is quite full this quarter. One that sort of struck me though, and I just want to comment on it, we often feel like living in a Jasper, we're a bit sheltered from things of the outside world. So to see that they tended to practice a lockdown procedure just struck me a little bit. So again, I'm happy that there's that they're around, and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to Mr. Given. I wonder whether administration could ask Sergeant Bedezy whether it's possible to get breakdown of the charge, whatever that is, the the crime statistics by location and confirm whether this includes the work of the Edson Integrated Traffic Service that he's mentioned. So are these statistics within all of Jasper National Park by everybody? Might it include over a sheriff's? Might it include the Edson Integrated Service? And I don't know whether that would be possible, but it would be interesting to know what percentage of these are within the improvement district, what are within the broad municipal boundary, where within town zone. Particularly as our share of placing costs continues and our population remains stable. So I don't know whether those statistics would be available, but I'd be interested to see them if they are.
For the questions, any motions to accept the report, information? Motion from Counsel Boxer, thank you. All those in favor? They're in opposed? Okay, moving on to, we're going to go through a couple of new business items, and then we'll take a break. Seven point one, derelict properties on Canot Drive, led by Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and I'll need a break after this. It struck me reading some of the news across Canada municipalities about how different municipalities deal with not only commercial property that's not being fully utilized, but also residential properties. But I thought I would just concentrate on our situation here in Jasper, where we have a commercial cap. We don't have an unlimited number of square feet that can be accessed for commercial activity. And I'm thinking of a couple of buildings on Canot that have basically been shuttered. There may be some activity going on inside, there may not be. And I wanted to raise a question about how we are taxing and obtaining revenue from what is very valuable space on our main street, and how does the municipality either benefit or not benefit from an active business in a shuttered property? And if I may, to administration, there may be some additional work that'll need to be done. But I think it's really important that we, you know, in our in our situation here with, as I say, a limited commercial footprint and virtually no additional commercial space available, that we get the highest and best use from a taxation point of view from our commercial or non-resident properties.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Certainly, with Council Malick putting this on ahead of time, the administration had a chance to have a bit of a look at the issue, and I can report that the vacant properties in the central business district or in that sort of in the town site are generally taxed as they are assessed as though they were an improved property with a typical tenant in place. So I know for larger hotel properties or other types of operations, there's sort of a three-year rolling average based on revenue, and that isn't applied in in these cases. And so it really is looked at the overall property. And if that property had a tenant, an average tenant in place, what the market rate for the leasing of that space would be. And that's what the building assessment is based on, and then the building is taxed on that assessment. So that's, I guess, a really long way of saying it. Doesn't matter if it's vacant. The building is still taxed in the same way as though it were occupied. The other portions of the picture, I suppose, that would be important to know is that on the utility basis, these properties, even though they may have low or no consumption of water, our triple C model ensures that they are contributing to the base operating cost of the system through their connection charge, because they would be receiving utility bills. And they would also be contributing to capital, the municipality's capital program through their capital charge and bills as well. So in both those instances, it would at least I think we could say that it would be in the property owner's interest to have the space filled by paying lessy because they are still going to incur those underlying costs, the, you know, property tax bill and the connection and capital charge on utility bill. So there aren't a lot of areas where they are getting out of costs by having a space vacant.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate the administration being ready to to answer the question and with having, bringing it up, I see no reason for I personally have no recommendation or need to make a motion for anything further.
Well, thank you for bringing it up, Counselor Hutton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I do have a question for say, given to your knowledge, are are both of these properties current with their tax and utility bills?
I don't have information on that. It hasn't been brought to my attention that they were not current. And I would remember from Director Malincheck's report some time ago that our current unpaid taxes was actually relatively low, sort of end off last year. So I, you know, I certainly wouldn't see these as particular significant issues for the municipality if they are included in there. Certainly something administration could check and report back by email. But I'm not aware of the particular concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and thank you, Counselor Melnick, for bringing this up. I I would think we might want to flag this as a topic for discussion at our next intergovernmental forum at Parks Canada there, that the land use authority, this is a land use issue, it's not specifically our issue, but as repercussions, I think it would be a good point of discussion with Parks Canada at our next meeting.
Counselor Boxer?
While we bring that up, I wondered if we could also discuss the empty residential properties as well as the business one. Thank you.
Do you have any further, like, motion for this or?
Well, I suppose up to council, if you if you wanted to direct administration to add discussion about vacant commercial properties and vacant residential properties to the next intergovernmental meeting, that would be a motion that council could make. If you want to refer either of those matters to administration for a report back or to some other forum for that discussion, absolutely could do that as well. In the absence of any motion, then we would think from administrative perspective, just consider the matter closed and we wouldn't be providing any additional information.
Yeah, I guess it is just discussion that we would have with that intergovernmental week now that went for aspirants. You didn't, thank you. Okay. Moving on, we're going to take a break, ten minute break. So we'll be back at ten fifty. Okay, welcome back. I'm going to pass it back over to Counselor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. And just before we formally move on to the next agenda item, back to item seven point one regarding derelict properties in in the community, and appreciate the the additional information from other counselors. I would like to refer the make a motion to refer the matter of the vacant residential and non-residential properties to our next intergovernmental affairs meeting. And by making the motion against on our motion action list for further input later in the year.
Thank you for that, Counselors, comments about the motion, have a question, all in favor? Opposed, the motion carries. Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to item seven point two, new business destination stewardship plan alignment review.
Mr. Given, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. Just as I launch into the presentation of this report, I'll note that Brooklyn Rushin from Tourism Jasper is here. I think she's been identified to be sort of the lead for tourism Jasper on on the plan going forward. So Brooklyn's here and she may be able to answer some questions, not going to put you on the spot, but I'm sure that she didn't come just to listen. So we do have an extra resource if council has any additional questions. So I'm here to present a report outlining the municipalities' alignment with the recently adopted Tourism Jasper Destination Stewardship Plan. Back in two thousand twenty twenty one, municipality actually provided thirty thousand dollars to support the development of this plan. And then through two thousand twenty two, Mayor Ireland and I participated in steering committee for the plan. Before late last year, Tourism Jasper ultimately presented the plan to committee the whole and committee recommended direct administration to review the plan to identify opportunities for the municipality to participate in the implementation and come back to a future committee, the whole meeting with a report. So since council has formally endorsed the plan in December of last year, we've posted on the municipality's website in the plans and reports section, so it's there for the public to view and for other members of the administration or the community. Broadly, the plan provides a ten year roadmap of five strategic goals containing fifty four initiatives built around the key pillars of place, people, planet, prosperity and policy. Administration has reviewed the plan and attached to your council agenda, you'll see administration's assessment of the items that are most relevant to the municipality. So to be clear, there are those full fifty four initiatives. Some of them are more folk directly focused at tourism operators or the industry itself. That would be out of scope for the municipality. And so the strategic alignment attachment that you see is administration's sense of the items that are most directly related to the municipality or municipal operations. And our report to you on activities that we're currently undertaking or that are planned that relate to the action items that are identified. Tourism Jasper is is or has asked community partners to identify what they see their role in with relation to the items. They see that in sort of four different levels as at the activator, where the organization would lead the initiative and make it happen. The facilitator, where the organization would work collaboratively with other groups and make coordinate efforts to complete the initiative. A collaborative collaborator, where an organization would work with other groups, but doesn't coordinate the efforts. Or an advocate where the organization expresses support for the action, but where the item is really outside the scope of the organization's mandate. So we've applied that same criteria or evaluation. And you can see that in the strategic climate attachment under the MOJ role column. And you can see in in a number of areas, the municipality is an activator, for example, the specific recommendation. And I won't go through all of them, we'll just do this one as a as to get you oriented to how it's laid out. So in the destination stewardship plan, item number one was enhance the destination to improve the overall experience for visitors year round. An item underneath that was enhance mobility within Jasper. And the specific actions were, there are a number of specific actions, but one of them was develop a multimodal transit system. So that one, the MOJ administration has identified this as the activator, which would mean that the organization leads the initiative and will make it happen. The status of that is, as counsel knows, active, and we provided a little bit of information in detail. Obviously, the municipality started our transit system. We've secured grants to support further development of transit and e-bike sharing. So with respect to a multimodal transit system, municipality is currently working in that area and is leading those efforts. And you can see through all the rest of the items, how administration has assessed our level, potential level of involvement and the activities that are currently underway are planned. There is a second attachment, which is the full list of all fifty four items for council's information. And with this report, administration is recommending that council receive the report for information first. And then I think you have some some choice about whether you, you know, agree with administration's view of the items that we're that implicate the municipality. You may wish to direct administration to gather additional information on any of the areas that are there or any of the fifty four items. You may wish to refer any particular area or item to the strategic planning session or some other venue for additional discussion. But essentially, the plan was presented at the end of last year. Administration has reviewed the plan and has identified these as the areas the municipality is currently active or plans to be active. And if council would like to discuss any of those items in any depth, you certainly can direct that conversation to happen at whatever forum you think is appropriate. I'm happy to answer any questions. And if there are any questions that I can't answer or that are maybe more for Tourism Jasper to get certain, like, administration up to the table.
Thank you for that. First off, I'll open the question or open the conversation to counselors, any questions or comments on the presentation. Counselor Melick.
Yesterday, I thought I was going to be quiet. Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, and thank you to Mr. Given administration for the alignment review report. And specifically putting in where the municipality will be able to actively coordinate, facilitate, collaborate, good terms that are being used as to the role of of the municipality in each of these areas. How will this strategic alignment be used for capital planning for two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six? The reason I ask that, as you mentioned, we have an option of of bringing this to a strategic planning session, which is coming up at the end of the month. And would it be helpful if this was part of the agenda to help us focus on capital for the next three years?
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Counselor, I think the it may be worthwhile for council to discuss what your general intent is with the plan. You know, any one of these items, you know, or could could lead to a significant amount of work, you know, for the municipality. So I think I think it would be helpful for council to understand, you know, what position does this plan have in the hierarchy of, you know, sort of guidance documents for the municipality? Should this should administration refocus its efforts towards the priorities that are identified in this plan? How does this plan interact with council's strategic plan, which is, you know, what's the order of precedence there? And and of course, I don't think that says it's a either or game, it's probably both and. But I think having the plan in place was a significant amount of work that involved a lot of community input. I think it can provide useful information for council about, you know, the community's priorities. And certainly when the municipality is making decisions about its capital plan or its operations, because many of these really do impact municipal operations. It should be considered whether those are in alignment with this plan. Again, that I think that type of discussion is really more about what's council's desire for administration to activate this plan? You know, do we wait until there's some other forum where we engage with partners to discuss the details of who's taking the lead on what? Do we take a more proactive approach and sort of preempt that by saying, well, we are going to leave these things? And we've identified the handful of things that are going to be priority over a certain period of time? Or do we continue to do what we have planned to do while checking our alignment on a cohort basis now that we have this information? You know, that that last one is probably a a reflection of the fact that the municipality, as you can see from the report here, already is, you know, has a really wide variety of initiatives and activities that broadly support the intent of the plan or specifically support support individual action items. A good example that a good example might be the item under developed shoulder and winter season experiences. At a high level, you may not think that that's necessarily municipal role. But when you look at one of the actions underneath, it says develop and enhance indoor arts, culture and heritage. Yeah, well, so the municipal facilities such as the arena, multiverse, all aquatics, cultural center, all provide space for those types of activities. Administration or the municipality does financially support the operations of the museum, library, JAG and Habitat. So there is already significant municipal investment in operating for organizations that that work in that space. And the municipality also has its community and economic development fund that are available for groups that might like to, you know, to stimulate some activity. So that's an example of where there's an item from the plan where you might not immediately say, well, that's a municipal responsibility. But the municipality is already actively engaged in that space. I think the question is, how much more should the municipality do? How or is there sort of a shared responsibility where other partners now need to complement the municipality's efforts? Again, and so I think you can see how on any one of these items, there could be very detailed discussion about municipal role, responsibility. And so I don't know if Tourism Jasper has any intent to bring together potential parties to sort of discuss the next steps. I know that Brooklyn has shared with me that they they do have some plans about how to activate the plan. I remember when James Jackson made the presentation on behalf of Tourism Jasper, he said that this was the first step presenting the plan and that there would be additional steps. If it's okay with council and okay with Brooklyn, maybe I would invite her up to talk about what the next steps are from the Tourism Jasper perspective.
All right, hello everyone, thanks for having me today. And I wanted to first thank Mr. Given for going to bed a line with people that really helps us on our end on kind of facilitating implementation of this entire plan. I mean, in terms of our next step, so what we really want to do is individually talk to different groups. So with municipality, with First Canada, with different businesses, also with community organizations, and really understand where they see themselves fitting into this plan. We are not in the role of assigning any work to anyone, we really want to make it a collaborative effort. So that's kind of our role for the next couple of months is really having those targeted conversations. So something like this is really, really helpful for us. And then where our plan is, you know, maybe in the spring sometimes and forming together all of these groups. Once we've had those those sessions, what we really want to make sure is that we respect each organizational priority before so that we're not assigning any work, we don't want to do that. So that's kind of our plan for the next little while is really just to have those, you know, in person conversation, relationship building. And then bring it forward to larger groups and then eventually to the broader community. We kind of did a bit of a soft launch on our website, I know it's on the municipal website as well. And I think the community has a bit of an appetite, we want to make sure we have kind of all of our destiny, so to say, before we really launch that. Does that help answer a bit of those questions?
Thank you for that. Counselors, any questions? Mr. Russian. Maryland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. And if I may, after I ask this Russian, because she's here, I do have a question for Mr. Given as well. Could we anticipate from Tourism Jasper a similar sort of template? Because I I like the format. I do know though that nowhere is the municipality listed as an advocate. And I would I would be really interested to see where other partners see themselves as activators. We could fall in as advocates and it would just help in general picture. We have lots of opportunities for advocacy, but so far we haven't identified where those would be. If we can get a similar template from other partners, I think it would be really helpful in the process. If I may, for Mr. Given, just a couple of matters that are not included that I thought might be indicative of the municipality being an activator. Firstly, in terms of enhancing the destination to improve the overall experience for visitors and residents. I think our ongoing capital expenditures at the arena and the fitness center, the pool would fit within that category. I mean, the the impact that the new facilities will have on the tourism economy, I think, particularly for tournaments and what we can host. But also for the enjoyment of residence is is an important contribution to destination stewardship. And under the issue of strengthening community cohesion and social equity, I would have thought that our commitment to municipal daycare it's not daycare, it's early childhood, early childhood learning and childcare. Anyway, I I thought again, it's worth in a public document acknowledging that there are other things that municipality is engaged in that do in fact help develop a local workforce. Because with with childcare, hopefully at least more people are able to engage in the workforce and the labor issue is critical to the destination of that. So just a recognition of that, but would be a useful and appropriate thing to have in that document.
Counselor Boxer.
On that note too, I was noticing the absence of our in the document, our commitment to the port time position relating to indigenous relations as well as support for the for food security and grant writing. So I thought that that position is again, works very, very much toward many of the things listed in this in this document.
Counselors, any further questions, comments? Anything else to add on your, your end?
Nothing else, but in terms of actually I mentioned to Mayor Ireland, just what's kind of our plan for the next few months is really to get those documents from all the different groups. And we have our own internal ones, we're happy to share that with with your team as well. So we'll report back on that once we have the more plan and have a broader discussion with all the different partners. So thanks again for the the chance to have a conversation.
Thank you. Counselors, a motion to accept the report for creation of this book. Counselor Boxer. Call the question on favor. I suppose, thank you. Okay, moving on to item seven point three, paid parking two thousand twenty four.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. So administration is here with a wrap up report on the two thousand twenty three year and a recommendation for potential changes to the program for two thousand twenty four. Counsel knows a lot of the history of the program, so I'll sort of focus in on the more recent history. The revenue target set by council for two thousand twenty three was six hundred seventy five thousand. That projection was significantly exceeded with a total revenue for the year of just over one point one million dollars. So one point one five seven eight one five for those who were counting or wondering what that. Um, one point one five, seven, eight, one, five, for those who were counting or wondering what that number might be. Um, but so it is a a material revenue opportunity for the municipality. In twenty twenty-four, council set a uh revenue target in the budget of one point three five million dollars. Um, and administration has provided some recommendations on uh program parameters. Uh, needed to cheat to reach this target, um, as well as some that we believe will help improve the program. Uh, implementation on an ongoing basis. Uh, we've also provided some uh twenty twenty-three paid parking data and a cash report by a contractor, uh, curb IQ or curb. Curbside mobility, um, that generated that out of our data. Um, I'll maybe just really focus on the recommended changes to the program. Uh, that's really the nature of the report. Administration is essentially uh recommending. Three changes that will impact the paid parking program. Uh, and then a fourth change that is operational that came up through the course of discussion. First, um, is a recommendation that council consider uh moving to year-round operation of the program. Um. Administration uh. Estimates that uh moving to year-round operation uh could generate between eighty-five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars additional revenue. Um. We would also uh want to ensure that a part of the conversation was the uh perceptions of visitors and potential uh. Negative perceptions on behalf of businesses located in the central business district. Certainly, uh, administration and council have heard some of these concerns in the past. Um, so uh, this recommendation is not uh. Not overlooking those concerns. We want to acknowledge that certainly we have heard that. Um, but uh, based on uh the estimates uh and the data that the administration is able to gather on our year's utilization of programming. Some forward-looking uh estimates based on typical number of visitors that we see throughout the course of the year in different months. Um, again, administration estimates that it could generate um, uh, a significant amount of additional revenue. Um, we have included in the report our tally of potential revenue, a midpoint number which I think is. Is reasonable yet conservative of of being able to generate approximately ninety-two thousand additional revenue by moving to a year-round program. Uh, beginning with when we launched the program, May of twenty twenty-four, so not starting next month or earlier, but just waiting for the regular seasonal startup. And then continuing on from there, if they need around program. Uh, this is similar to the approach in other communities. Um, both Banff and Canmore do have uh year-round programs. They change their rate uh depending on different times of the year. Um. Where other communities uh that would see themselves as as similarly visitor-based communities. Uh, Drumheller and Southern Lake definitely have um. Sort of shorter seasonal programs. Uh, so that's the first recommendation, and maybe I'll just go through the recommendations at high level and if I can answer any questions that someone have. The second recommendation is that there be an increase in the uh rates of the paid parking program for both on-street and off-street. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, the rates were three dollars and fifty cents per hour on-street and two dollars and fifty cents per hour in parking lots or fifteen dollars a day. Or a lot. Administration is recommending that the rates be uh see a modest increase for twenty twenty-four season uh to four dollars, four dollars an hour on-street. And three dollars an hour uh. In parking lots or seventeen dollars a day in those off-street lots. You can see that these rates are um actually below. The summer season rates uh for Banff and they are uh in line with the. Peak rates in Canmore, so that four dollars an hour on-street. Um. It was uh of note that both Banff and Canmore uh don't differentiate between uh off-street and on-street. So they actually don't have a lower off-street parking rate where the municipality Jasper. With the proposal would continue to offer that encouragement for parkers to, you know, um, park in lower utilization areas. Um, by offering that slightly reduced rate. So that's the second recommendation of of the essentially a fifteen, sorry, fifty cent per hour increase in rates for both on-street and off-street. The next recommendation is uh. A reconfiguration of the off-street lot uh in the two hundred blocks on Long Canot. So on the northeast end of town, uh, there is a lot that offers off-street parking and has some. Large size, uh, oversized stalls. Uh, that lot currently has eleven electric vehicle charging stations, um, ten regular stalls and twelve oversized stalls. Uh, administration is recommending reconfiguring this to um allow for more regular-sized stalls. Um. Staff, by law staff reported seeing very low utilization of the oversized stalls over the course of the summer and. There are additional options for oversized parking along uh Canot, um, directly along the street. Uh, as well as in the RV parking lot on Hazelwood. So administration believes that there's an opportunity to generate a modest amount of new revenue. Approximately uh thirty-six thousand dollars, um, while providing more availability for for regular-sized vehicles by reconfiguring that lot. And the final recommendation um really doesn't have an impact on potential revenue, um, but is an operational, uh, potential operation improvement. Um, as council and the community all know, the RV parking lot uh supports a number of commercial operators uh in line with the commercial use of public space by law. Uh, where uh they will load their passengers for wrapping uh or other tours. Um, on the RV parking lot, um, administration is recommending uh. Reconfiguring that to provide a bus loading zone, um. A specific bus loading zone that's actually intended for that purpose. So we can provide more opportunity for parking as well as continuing to support our commercial operators. Operators by providing a designated area for the loading and loading of passengers for tours. Um, so those are the the recommendations. You'll see uh the table in the report that I. Provides some information about the. Uh, what administration believes are the approved uh twenty twenty-four rates in other communities. Uh, gathered from their websites or or bylaws where we can find them, as well as a summary of the proposed changes and the financial impact. Um, administration believes that these changes could yield uh approximately three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. Uh, which would enable the municipality to exceed the. Council-directed revenue target of one point three million dollars contained in twenty twenty-four budget. Thank you for that, uh, councilors. Uh, Council Callan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and huge to Mr. Given. Um, last year, um, our commercial hotels let um pay for stalls. And at a lower rate, um, will be uh seven days, um, but again for um twenty twenty-four.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, that's a question that I'd need to uh discuss with uh Director Melanchuk and. Nadon, I don't know whether we've built in that reduced rate for hotels into this model or not, but that's something I can check on your vacuum. Council Boxer.
Uh, through you Deputy Mayor Wilson to CEO Given, I wondered if there would be any significant cost, uh, capital cost to the uh to uh. Recommendations uh uh around the marketing lot, reconfiguration and the new uh bus loading zone.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, you know, my understanding is that uh the capital costs are all able to be accommodated within the approved twenty twenty-four budgets. There wouldn't be anything outside of our normal. Um, let's say minimal costs uh that are able to be accommodated within the approved budget and our normal operating. Council Callan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, I'd like to congratulate uh administration. I think the report's great. Uh, I like a lot of the recommendations. Uh, probably can support most of them. I'm still not in support of winter parking. Um, any different winter parking, um. We just looked at this winter, there's hardly anybody in town. And. I, we're not there yet, and I understand that Banff and Canmore are there, but they're an hour and a half from the international airport. They have that city traffic we don't have. And. I understand that we need to um drive more revenue. I'd be more inclined to cut, to put up a rate to five dollars an hour on-street, four dollars an hour. Off-street and can't let it's on the. Summer business. Um, I think, you know, people are going to camera. We all pay in the city. We all know how much it costs. I think five dollars an hour is not unreasonable. And I think to continue to drive revenue through high season is better and to. Leave our winter season as it's for now till it increases.
Thank you for that. Um, maybe I'll get a question in here, um. You talked about reconfiguring the lot, uh, on Canot, um. To gain a modest uh increase, although what would be the cost to that reconfiguration? Sorry, Deputy Mayor Wilson, the the cost? Uh, yeah, uh, it's my understanding is that it's essentially um repeating the lines. Uh, I think that that's just some config reconfiguration that way. Um, I don't believe that there are any other larger improvements planned. Um, if there were any, it might have been in the nature of um providing some uh, some. Nose-to-nose parking rather than uh the current bull in um. That was something that uh administration had discussed a number of months ago, but I believe generally the intent here is to to realign that the markings on the pavement, so uh very minimal cost. Council Building.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, and and along that same topic regarding the uh oversized vehicle parking. Um. Interesting about the observations over the summer. Um, there are a number of hotels in the downtown core that don't. They don't have sufficient parking on their own property for tour buses, and I would suspect that that's one location. Where the buses could end up without impacting our residents. And the other thing, um, is that parking lot. Can facilitate campers and motorhomes for people who are um going to the grocery store. So I'm wondering, even though they may not seem that they're used with. A lot of time, but I wonder if the turnover of the vehicles in there, that that might be part of our. An important part of our parking offering to the visitors that um. Perhaps we shouldn't take away. Um, I I'm just concerned that that we might just be pushing some of these other vehicles into the residential areas. Uh, causing more problems.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Given. Yeah, thanks very much, uh, Deputy Wilson. Certainly appreciate that concern, especially with those oversized vehicles, uh. You know, as referenced in the report, you know, there are a variety of other options. There is uh on-street parking available, uh, along Canot. Uh, for those oversized vehicles, um, so that is an option that council, you know, feels that having, continuing to have dedicated. Off-street parking for oversized vehicles uh in that end of town is important. Certainly, that's a. Uh, you know. That's why, that's why this is here as a recommendation. It's up to council to decide that's an appropriate service level and that's the need for the community. Um, I would make the observation that. Looking at the tape in the report, uh, really the material impact to the uh revenue of the program is in in the rates. Uh, and so if there were other options that. You know, so administration is proposing essentially a fifty cent per hour increase, and you can see that that we are estimating that that would generate approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, I would imagine that a similar fifty cent per hour increase above what administrations are recommending, uh, would deliver a similar amount, so. If there were some of our recommendations that council wasn't comfortable with at this time, uh, the revenue from those. Recommendations the council didn't follow up on could be offset by any other increase in that overall rate. Um, Marin.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh. Personally, I incur with. Council Callan, give up the the winter part in particular, given the nature of the economy this winter. Something to be considered. When things improve, I think, but maybe not yet. But I wonder in in terms of the overall approach, whether any consideration has been given to. Some form of. Dynamic pricing. Um, so the high demand is weekends, high demand is July and August, so even with the. An increase in the base. Is it possible within the system? To have a differential rate um. For high demand periods, um. It seems to be the way of the world. Uber, I think, uses dynamic pricing. People are getting used to it. Even uh. Taylor Swift concerts and the Super Bowl tickets are subject to dynamic pricing, so I. I I just wonder whether any thought is given to that and whether that is even a possibility within the hotspot system.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, so I I can't speak to whether it's uh currently available within the hotspot system. Um, I consider it's, you know, it's computer programming, and and so uh administration has seen a couple of instances where a hotspot is able to uh. Configure the program to enable functionality that doesn't exist in their certain base approach, and that comes at a cost to the municipality. Um, and there's can be significant lead time and development. So basically, if we're asking them to reprogram something custom for us. Then we can likely to expect to pay for that and uh would take some significant development time. Um. And it may exist already within their program, so I I just don't have uh the information on that. If it was something that council wished administration to explore, I would suggest that would be. Uh, something that we could explore through twenty twenty-four to consider for twenty twenty-five. Uh, that way we wouldn't be. Um, under the gun, so to speak, in order to make program changes, get the, you know, the app reformatted to what exactly, you know, to some custom approach that we might be doing here. Um. So again, uh, administration could explore that. My suggestion would be if council wants to, that that be explored for a future year. Um. The other thing about dynamic pricing would be that uh we would have to carefully consider whether we're, we would just set peak period pricing. Really by identifying the fact that we know when we're busy, dynamic pricing would would start to imply you'd have to have. By the minute data about actual utilization and then have your pricing respond to that. If if what council was thinking was, look, we know we're busy in. July and August. Uh, then let's, we could. Just say so and and have a different rate for July and August or weekends in July or August or whatever it is. My caution would be, again, that type of change for introducing a new peak period pricing. Um. Would take a fair bit of configuration, and my recommendation would be. If you want to explore that, that should probably be for the twenty twenty-five year, giving us lots of notice that you wish to explore. Certainly uh to be helpful. Um, uh, yeah. Thank you, Council Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, first off, I just want to congratulate. Administration on this incredible, what a great year we landed, which is awesome. Um, I do support year-round parking and I'm not sure why we wouldn't. During budget time in November, uh, Mike Dave from Tourism Jasper sat at our table and asked us why we weren't doing year-round parking. I think it's. We, uh, earlier today, um, when we were talking about expanding transit to the canyon, Council Melnick. Expressed concerns that our our budget's tight. I don't know why we wouldn't be looking at any way to. Uh, take advantage of ways to generate revenue. I work downtown. Um, quite a bit in a busy restaurant and I'm asked all the time by visitors how to pay for parking because there are signs up and they don't know how to pay. I I think a concern I have heard about paid parking in the winter is. The uh ski rental shops that the inability, the quick take-up-and-go, that our paid parking doesn't start till nine AM anyways. Most ski rental shops are open at eight because the ski hill opens at nine. I think that's the the busy time for rentals, so that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be an issue during that time. Um, but yeah, I I do support your own. Paid parking.
Um, yeah, Council Melon just like, um. I know it's a touchy subject, uh, but I would would like to ask, um. In Banff, Canmore, Southern Lake and Drumheller. Uh, is residents. For is it still resident-free parking or are residents required to pay as well and? What is the approximate loss that we're looking at? Maybe you don't have that number, but uh.
Maybe you don't have that number, but, uh, that when you're not requiring residents to pay.
Uh, thanks, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Uh, so I don't have, uh, any information or estimation at hand right now about the potential revenue of requiring Jasper residents to pay for parking. Um, that would be something that would would take some time to figure out. Would probably entail, uh, estimating the number of people that we have registered in the hotspot system and then making some estimate of how often they may park. So you can appreciate that. There would, that would be more of an art than a science, uh, but we would need to collect some data to start with. Uh, my understanding is that certainly Banff, uh, sees, uh, paid parking as Jasper does in our current system as visitor-paid parking where residents are excluded. Um, I believe in Canmore, they offer the opportunity for residents to buy monthly passes. So that system, uh, may be slightly different. I would need to do some more research on that. Um, Drumheller, uh, is very specific that theirs is visitor-paid parking, residents are excluded. They have other, uh, inter-ministerial issues that they're dealing with in that area. Uh, and Sillam Lake, I'm not aware, but I believe that they also follow the similar, uh, visitor-paid parking, uh, approach. So I would say that the majority of these communities that are in reference in the report are similar to Jasper, where residents are exempted. The only exception being Canmore, where I just don't have that same level of certainty.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate the fact that, uh, yeah, I'm on art rather than science. Yeah, it's unfortunate that, uh, we, I think we had the ability with the credit system, um, to kind of, um, gather that data on how much residents are using the system and parking downtown. But, uh, I mean, I guess, you know, a couple of years ago, we got rid of that, unfortunately. Counselors, Counselor Melick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and I do want to take the opportunity to express, uh, my feelings on year-round parking. I I think we're not there yet. Uh, I personally would, um, not support, um, parking fees through the October through April time period. And and to the mayor's point, this was a a bit of a rough year. And, you know, we just, for the for the amount of money that it will generate, um, the aggravation, what it might, which might cause with our more price-sensitive visitors, may not be worth that additional amount. So the other way to generate additional revenue is to increase the availability of additional parking stalls. And the reason I bring that up is that we just talked about Parks Canada asking us to look at a opportunity to have transportation to Milline Lake, uh, sorry, to Milline Canyon. Well, those folks are gonna have to park someplace, and I wonder if there's an opportunity within the town site that we may be able to develop an additional parking lot for an extra hundred vehicles or seventy-five vehicles, which add four dollars an hour or three dollars an hour for us providing transportation up to Milline Canyon, where it is very, very congested. There may be an opportunity that where there's a, um, lands that may be zoned appropriately or maybe an area that could be converted to parking. So I wouldn't be taking that off the table as another way of increasing our our parking revenue. And I I throw that out there with no real, um, location in mind, um, other than seeing that in Banff, they're looking at redeveloping the railway lands. And, you know, Parks Canada's developed a number of parking lots in that region to facilitate mass transportation. So I think it's it's not just about our marketing rates. I think there's a discussion about the whole parking and transportation, um, plan that we should be looking at in the longer term.
Mr. Givens, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, just wanted to follow up on the question about resident parking. In a quick look, uh, Canmore does have a resident parking permit, uh, program uh, that essentially provides residents that are registered with program, uh, free parking for three hours or less. And so if, so essentially, they, yeah, free parking for residents for up to three hours. Uh, if they wish to park in the town center area, they can purchase monthly passes at a cost of eighty-three dollars a month in the peak season or forty-one, fifty a month in the low season. So I think that, you know, they they have a bit of a mixed approach where they save residents for sort of coming and going uh, up to three hours, no cost. If there's a need for a resident to park in their town center area, which is, I would imagine, is a priority area for them, for longer than three hours, then they can buy a resident pass that it means that. So a bit of a mixed approach in Canmore.
Thank you for that. And and of course, not for this year, but maybe something to look into, uh, close for next year. Counselors, anything further? Been looking for any motions? It's interesting that. Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I will make the motion to expand. I I think we should separate these two recommend recommended motions. Um, I will make the motion to expand the paid parking program to year-round operations.
Okay, um, counselors, comments on the motion? Questions? Everybody understands the motion? Uh, call the question, all in favor? Uh, opposed? Uh, there are two in favor, uh, four opposed, so that motion is defeated. Thank you for that motion, Counselor Hall. Um, any further motions at this time? Counselor Hall?
I I I'm, I can quite ask a good question of the administration. Without year-round parking, with would increase in these rates to four dollars and three dollars and seventeen, will we generate what we forecasted?
Uh, so I'll say that based on, uh, the information in the report, you know, uh, one point one five in revenue under the current program conditions and administration estimate of the new rates that are proposed in the report generating a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we'd be very close. Um, and that's where it's referencing any, any increase to the rate above the four dollars an hour on-street and three dollars an hour off-street, um, would would generate additional revenue. So, um, uh, it would be close if, uh, council approved administration's recommendation. Um, any increase in the rate above, I would be very confident we would achieve the revenue target.
Counselor Hall?
Thank you for that. I wonder if there is appetite around the table to add fifty cents an hour on top of the two on-street and uh, three, four fifteen, three fifty for twenty twenty four.
Counselors, head nods?
I, can I make a motion?
Please.
I I would like to make a motion to increase the paid parking rates to four dollars and fifty cents an hour on-street and three dollars and fifty cents an hour or seventeen dollars a day in parking lots.
Counselors, comments? Everybody understand the, uh, motion, the Counselor Melick?
Thank you. I just want to, um, for clarity, um, I've seen that we were three fifty an hour, um, this year, uh, on-street and two fifty in parking lots. So we're, um, increasing, uh, by a dollar. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Um, I'll call the question. Oh, Marin?
If I may, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I I wonder whether Uber might be interested in, you said four fifty and three fifty? And we're suggesting, or at least it's recommended, four and three fifty. I see a value in the differentiation, but others are not doing that apparently. Um, and so rather than raise the the four to five or to four fifty, we just made them all four. And we quickly calculate what difference that would make. I I don't know how many off-street and on-street there are. I I'm not sure. I'd throw it out for your consideration for your motion. As I say, I think there is a benefit to encourage people to go to off-street parking, um, and make it higher for the, for the on-street. But I'm just trying to figure a different approach.
Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I I would have been happy to go five and four. I'm just trying to, you know, feel the appetite here. Um, and and I know you all know I'm very passionate about collecting as much as we possibly can from pay, from visitor pay parking for our bottom line.
And again, just to repeat the motion as it stands.
I move to increase the paid parking rates to four dollars and fifty cents an hour on-street and three dollars and fifty cents an hour or seventeen dollars a day in parking lots.
If I may speak to the motion, uh, I will vote in favor in as much as this is a recommendation to council. So it comes back to, as I said, is everybody in that week to think about how we might further refine that motion, but I think it's worth some discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Givens, were you gonna? Chairman? I don't think I'm good. I will vote, uh, against the motion. I am in favor of increasing rates, although I think we do have to have, uh, sort of back to the conversation about residents, uh, and if, you know, the necessity for them to may maybe just out parking, uh, parking passes or or a limitation on how much parking they can be doing, um, during the parking season. So I I don't feel like we should just keep chugging this rate up before we go back and have that conversation. And for the past two years, we have increased rates every year. So, yeah, with that being said, I I think I'll be voting not favor. Anything further before I call the question? Deputy, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, again, I I think it's incredibly important that we focus on generating as much extra revenue as we can. That's not, that doesn't come from municipal taxes. This is a great way. And just to speak to your comments about, um, I'm not sure if you're going towards potentially not having residents pay, which I do. I I do think it could be a conversation. I I would imagine, though, if we, you know, we put a rate up to five and four next year, we could have a different rate for residents. Like, if we decided we wanted to go that way, I I think that would be within our what what we could do. But that's, I just wanted to speak to that because I, I was wondering if that's where you're going with that. Thank you.
Um, everybody understands the motion? I'll call the question all in favor? Uh, opposed? Uh, there's one opposed, the motion carries. Any additional motions regarding parking? Counselor Wexler?
Uh, committee direct administration to designate a bus drop-off zone on Hazel Avenue adjacent to the RV parking lot.
Not, uh, comments, questions? For a call to motion? Like to speak to the motion? Um, call the question then, all in favor? Uh, there are none opposed, that motion carries. Counselors, any further motions regarding parking? It's an opportunity to reconfigure Cannot Drive two hundred block. All right. Mayor?
I just did have one question, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through to Mr. Given, there is a note from the curve IQ material appendix A where on-street parking on Cannot Drive is estimated by measuring the the curving. And I'm curious whether there is any thought about how we maximize the use of the curb space. Right now, I mean, there might be some. Well, for large stretches, there is a white line demarcating the parking lane from the driving lane, but there's nothing to indicate stalls. And my own anecdotal observations are that we're some, ah, wasted space. People just don't pull up close to somebody else, or they pull in and leave three quarters of a car lane, um, to the no parking somewhere behind them. It's just, it's a really inefficient use and without capital expenditure, is there any way to get greater utility out of the use of of those stretches on?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, for Mayor Ireland to say that this is probably also anecdotal and and based on my perception of issues. So we could certainly take that away and discuss with the, you know, if they have any other insights. Um, we have in the past had, uh, lines demarcating stalls through a portion at least of the area. I don't know that it actually really improved people's behavior that much. Um, and we have such a wide variety of vehicles, um, that that again, I, you know, defining a standard stall size means that if somebody with an extended box and vehicle, you know, maybe a slightly longer than that standard size. Although I think, actually, we we built the standard-sized stalls or when we marked, at least we parked them, I think, for the largest possible vehicles. It meant that you could probably fit in two mini Coopers, you know, or two, two compact cars in one stall, which might have confused the issue for for parkers. So I I don't know the answer to that. My perception would be that providing the opportunity of defining what the parking lane is, um, is is probably goes, goes it gets, and then we need to expect people to to park them tight. But I, you know, I don't know that we can control that, per se. There could be, if council wanted to move to ensuring people were parked in defined parking stalls, that might have significant staffing implications. If we started to take an enforcement-based approach to ensuring that, you know, if you're parked outside of a parking stall or across two, that there was a enforcement action that happened, that would be a, that would be in addition to our current level of service. Um, and and we would have to really carefully consider, um, uh, the operation impact of of certain, that level of enforcement.
Okay, um, this is the end of paid parking. There are no further motions. We're moving on to, you're okay over there?
I I guess I just was wondering whether if we turned a portion of the parking lot on Cannot across the grocery store uh, into more park, more individual parking stalls and left a couple for the longer vehicles, if that would be, uh, possible and and or, uh, desirable. But I guess, uh, observationally, I noticed that they're generally empty and that there are um, and that I think they could be used by individual vehicles, smaller vehicles.
Yes, good. But yeah, so I just, you know, will, uh, prefer counsel to the report. Uh, the second table that sort of summarizes the proposed or recommended changes, I think gives a pretty good view of that current configuration. So there are currently ten regular stalls that are paid parking. So there is currently, um, stalls designated for paid parking in that lot. Uh, there are approximately twelve oversized or RV stalls that are free. Um, and so, you know, that's, that's the, uh, that's the portion essentially converting those free stalls to paid and doing the reconfiguration. Uh, administration believes that that could get us to a total of forty stalls that would, that could be paid stalls. I don't know that there's anything that prevents oversized vehicles from parking in there. If there are sort of campers or RVs, you know, theoretically, I suppose, still parking there. I don't know the details of how the team is planning on creating that exactly. Uh, but I think it is essentially the fact that a significant area of that lot is currently dedicated to a free parking use. It's maybe not as much about the configuration, although, uh, establishing those additional stalls would be a part of that. And as referenced before, there are other options for oversized vehicles, you know, certainly along the street. Along cannot, uh, we do have a parking lane. A significant part of that parking lane is actually outside the paid parking area. Uh, so directly adjacent to there, uh, heading more towards the the north is where the paid parking zone ends. So directly adjacent to there, heading more towards the, the north is where the paid parking zone ends. So if there's a need for for operator or for size bus to be able to park, certainly have that opportunity along the roadside, outside of the paid parking zone along the right-hand side of.
Counselor Waxer?
So without, at the risk of not having gauged everyone's thoughts on this, I think I will make the motion that committee direct administration to reconfigure the Canot Drive 200 block parking lot to turn most oversized parking stalls into regular sized paid parking stalls for, yeah. Probably not clear. I'll just take the word most. I'll just leave the word most out.
Yeah, we, yeah, most is a bit of a moving target and people may have different definitions. So that would be helpful, I think.
Counselors, before I call the question, any further comments? Mary.
I apologize, but thank you, Mayor Wilson. Did you say, Mr. Given, that currently the oversized parking stalls are not charged? There are regular sized parking that we charge for, but definitely have a big vehicle you get for free. But why can't we just start charging for those? Why, why do we need to reconfigure if there's a need for oversized vehicles? Does it need to be a free?
That's a pretty reasonable question, Yourship, through, through Deputy Mayor Wilson. So certainly, you know, the part of the calculation here would be that the oversized stalls are, they may be slightly wider because that is all sort of the nosing area. And so reducing them to regular sized stalls, we could be able to swish more in and they would all be paid. But your, your observation is correct that currently if you have a big vehicle in parking that lot, you don't have to pay. But if you have a small vehicle in parking that lot, you do have to pay. And that is a reasonable, you know, the observation that that's inconsistent is, is pretty reasonable.
So, Councilman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I, I agree with the analogy of an observation of Mayor Island and, and the discussion with Mr. Given. It would seem to make sense to be very quick and easy for us to make those paid parking stalls and buses, generally speaking, would be there later in the day and just becomes a cost of doing business for the bus companies. They'd probably have to pay for parking when they're in downtown town or wherever anyway, or they relocate elsewhere. You know, doesn't seem like a lot, but it might generate another seven to ten thousand dollars over the course of the six months from just those few stalls.
Counselor Waxer?
I prepared to change my, to amend my motion to just that committee, I guess I can't really amend it now, can I?
Well, you can rescind it.
I can, I'll rescind it and make a different motion that committee direct administration to turn the oversized parking stalls in, into paid parking stalls.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Everybody understands the question? We'll call the question. All in favor? There are none opposed, that motion carries. Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I, I know a motion I made was repeated. I'm, I'm still thinking about a way, downtown on the weekends, it's packed. It's a, it's busy place. I know it's been a slower winter, but there's never anywhere to park. And again, I, I work in a busy restaurant. I'm asked all the time how to pay. Would there be, could we consider only having paid parking on the weekends in the winter and busy holidays? Like, are we able to do that with our system? I guess is what I'm asking.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, from a main perspective, I think I don't see any reason why the system couldn't do that. Again, it would take some reconfiguration with our, our provider. There would be a requirement for changing signage, because currently our signage identifies, you know, the, the length of the season of the program. And, and if we're going to and we take them down and put them back up, if, if there was some difference in what, what days of the week or times where you're required to pay versus not, then we would have to rethink our signage. So we could provide parkers more information about that. We would need to revise our public communication materials about the program, because that would yeah, because that, that would be, it would be more change. Certainly not impossible. I don't believe it's asking for anything unique in terms of custom coding for the application, because other communities do do something similar. But a lot of the sort of hard copy materials, the Minnesota's website, the public information of the print and our signage certainly aren't set up that way. And we would need to do some to reconfigure those.
Thank you for that, CEO Given. I won't make a motion at this time, but this might be something we could chat about at our, our strategic planning session and you can probably rest assured we'll be bringing this back next year.
Great, okay. Thank you for that. It's now twelve o'clock. We have a few more agenda items in front of us. I think I'll take this opportunity to call lunch break and we'll be back by one o'clock. Carry on. Does that make sense? Ready? Welcome back, everybody. The afternoon edition of Committee of the Home Meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We're on agenda item seven point four. It's Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation resolutions. I said, first to Mr. Given and then I'm sure.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Absolutely. Our housing coordinator will be handling the presentation. She's prepared to guide council through all this. And as I think she's going to reference just for everybody in the, the public's information, there's a bit of a distinction between the municipality as council and the municipality shareholder council. Remember that there is a policy that was at the last community poll meeting that hasn't had a chance to go to a regular council meeting for final approval. But the approach that we're taking here is in alignment with that policy where shareholder resolutions will come through council for council to discuss, consider, debate, and hopefully vote on. And after council votes on the resolutions at a regular meeting, then they form a shareholder resolution, which the mayor and deputy mayor or the mayor and one council are authorized to sign off on, doing that direction from shareholders to the, to the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation Board of Directors. So there's a couple of steps there. It is new territory for all of us. It may feel a little bit cumbersome, but I think as we get more used to this practice, it'll probably become second nature as we sort of have gone through it a few times. And with that said, I'm going to hand it over to Leanne because for our first time, we're going to provide you a whole bunch of resolutions that we need to take forward in order to set up the corporation. So I'll hand it over to Leanne.
Thank you, CEO Given. Thank you, CEO Given and Deputy Mayor Wilson. The recommendation before you asks that committee recommend council approve Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation shareholder resolutions two zero two four dash one through two zero two four dash seven. Alternatively, committee could recommend council approve the resolutions with amendments or have administration revise the resolutions and return to a future committee. As you are aware, the municipality of Jasper has established and incorporated the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation to develop affordable housing in the community. While the JMHC has been incorporated, there remains outstanding organizational shareholder resolutions to pass to meet requirements under the Business Corporations Act. Shareholder resolutions formalize and approve the foundational governance features of corporation and show that all proper corporate action has been taken. These matters can be dealt with through written resolution as per the act. Shareholder resolutions are the business of the municipality of Jasper as sole shareholder via council. Council as a whole directs the corporation by providing written shareholder resolutions as described in the JMHC shareholder policy, which committee has recommended council adopt. The attached resolutions have been drafted by legal council to ensure adherence to the act and are presented as to reflect the date of incorporation and corporate appointments at that time. They remain outstanding and are required to operationalize the JMHC. Resolutions two, two zero two four dash one, two and three ratify the unanimous shareholders agreement. A unanimous shareholders agreement, or USA, is a legal contract among all the shareholders of a company that outlines their rights, obligations, and arrangements concerning the management and operation of the business. It provides a level of control and stability in the management of a company. As noted previously, in the case of the JMHC, the municipality via council is the sole shareholder. At this time, the shareholder can request amendments or changes to the USA prior to ratifying. Resolution two zero two four dash four references the election of directors as of October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Counselors Wilson and Melnick were identified as directors on a corporation papers based on their appointment to the JCHC at that time. Resolution two zero two four dash five references the confirmation of bylaw number one as enacted by the directors of the corporation. Bylaw number one serves much the same purpose as the municipality's procedure bylaw in that it establishes the internal rules and regulations governing the operation and management of a corporation, including matters such as shareholder rights, director duties, and corporate procedures. Amendments to the bylaw are invited at this time. Resolution two zero two four dash six provides a ratification of directors acts which sanctions director actions performed after the fact, recognizing a concurrent need for initial shareholder and director organizational meetings. Resolution two zero two four dash seven acknowledges a change of directorship. At the October twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three council organizational meeting, councillor Melick was removed as director for the JCHC and councillor Demoto was appointed to the JCHC. Because appointment to the JCHC translates to appointment to the JMHC, a change of director's resolution is required. While today we are asking for resolutions regarding the USA bylaw and director appointments, it is important to note that the municipality of Jasper, as sole shareholder, at any time has the authority to revisit and amend bylaws, the USA, or change the directors on the board at its sole discretion. The above items form the basis of the organization's governance and are required under legislation. Passing the resolutions allows the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation to call its first meeting and begin deliberating on business decisions necessary for the day-to-day operations of the corporation. Thank you, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Counselors? And a little while to review this information. We got a little earlier, I think. And thank you for that. Questions, comments? Mary Ellen?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Through you, you need to miss Elche or Mr. Given. Got a better understanding now of what the intent is with respect to the Canot Street project. But there seems to be, to be a discrepancy in the USA regarding how this is going to unfold. So as I understand from the preamble, sections B and C, the intent is that there will be another corporation created, the Canot Project Corporation, which will actually own the facility. And that makes some sense. I get why we do that. So I take it then that Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation will be the shareholder of that rather than the MLJ. One question I have, does that make it a controlled corporation? Do we need to review? Does council need to review constituting documents for a Canot Project Corporation? As well as the municipal housing corporation?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, I can speak to that, at least in part. So your worship, that's, that that map that he laid out is correct. Municipality of Jasper, and that council members may remember from the business plan, municipality of Jasper is the sole shareholder in the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation and has all the rights and responsibilities for shareholders to appoint the board and everything else. The corporation and its board of directors would be, I think, likely the ones that would provide the direction for the, the owned corporation so that the, the project corporation cannot project code. That said, if council wished to review the, the articles of corporation for the project code, I think that would be within, right? We could certainly check to see what that process would look like. But I would imagine that those things would first go through the board of directors of the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation. So again, you just have to kind of visualize those layers. And if we start from the top, it would be council and then council as shareholder, which provides direction to the board of directors of the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation. And the board of directors would provide the guidance and direction to the company that it would own, the Canot Project Co. So certainly as the sole shareholder and the major responsible party, municipality can and should have some insight into that. If council wish to see those before going through, we absolutely can bring that forward. I don't know whether that would be required for shareholders to ratify the constitution of a subsidiary corporation. I think that it would likely be the board of directors that ratified those sort of subsidiary documents again, and I'm only going on the basis of those layers. Right? We're going to establish a corporation. It's going to have a board of directors. The council gets to appoint. And we're going to empower those board, that board of directors to do certain things. And I would imagine, and similarly to for his worship and his, his legal background, but I would imagine that one of the things that we may empower those board of directors with would be managed related to any subsidiary corporations. And that's something we can clarify for council, that we can confirm that approach and provide information back to council. And that if necessary, we could revise if council had a different sense of what was needed. But again, that idea of municipality striking the corporation, empowering the board of directors then to act within their authority, which would likely, I imagine, include the operations of the subsidiary corporation and going down in those layers.
And I'm not suggesting more work. I'm just trying to understand. I, I mean, that's a, it's a typical scenario. So shareholder, all co, all co, that's, and so the holding company in this case is the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation, which will own the shares of the project. And that's, that's fine. Given that, then I think there needs to be a change to the definitions under I. That definition says that facility is to be owned by the corporation. Corporation is defined as the, not the the project. The Canot Project Corporation, but municipal housing corporation. And so I I think we, in, in other places, we've identified that the Canot Project Corporation will own the facility. But that definition says that instead it will be owned by the corporation and the corporation is defined as the JMHC. So a slight change, but it's, I think it's critical. The municipal housing corporation is not going to own that facility. The definition has to be changed. The municipal housing corporation is not going to own that facility, then the definition has to be changed. And then if I, if I may, Article two point zero one. The USA. Indicates that. The MOJ will appoint the directors or the municipal housing. But it doesn't say how that will happen. I think we're we're all assuming because of the resolutions that are here that it will be. Council in its capacity, its council on behalf of the MOJ. Does that, but. I wonder whether the wording should be clear that the MOJ exercises. That appointment powers through council, because otherwise it could be that. The C. Could do that, you can do other things on behalf of the municipality. And if I made one other item. Under the, under by law one. Article four point zero nine of by law one. The heading is. Meetings to be held in public. But the whole paragraph goes on to explain when meetings don't have to be held in public. Would have thought that perhaps an indication that. The default is that they will be public, but there's. From what I could find, no indication of how the public would ever be notified. We ought to look at. Just adding some some wording about how the public would. Become aware that there was. A public meeting of. The board of directors.
If that's what, if I may. Your worship, so the four point zero nine, and this is very helpful. Four point zero nine is specific to share meetings of the shareholder of the corporation. So it doesn't actually say the directors of the corporation. So, and the process under the policy that we've set up is that there probably will be very few. Shareholder meetings, if if any, because any shareholder resolutions have to go through public meetings of council. So it might be a bit of a moot point here. But it is, this four point zero nine does specifically reference the meetings of the shareholders of the corporation, not the board of directors of the corporation.
And fair comment. True, fair comment, I appreciate that, and I overlooked it, but still. If it's to be a public meeting, if ever there is. How would we give notice to the board, so that they could exercise their. Their right to meetings?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, any changes requested here I will bring back to Brownlee Law. For them to amend both the USA and the by law. To include the changes that you were requesting today. Thank you.
Your worship and council, as. Leanne said. We certainly want to take anything back before making changes. There is some need to ensure that this doesn't move forward. And so maybe we can just have a little bit of discussion that when we do take back change, that we could hopefully have them processed as quickly as possible. I think, as I'm looking now more in context of the full. You know, section four point zero nine, as worship referenced. And where it's placed in the document, section four specifically references board meetings. I'm wondering if potentially that's actually a typo. In that four point zero nine should be referencing. Board meetings, board of directors meetings, and not shareholder meetings. Shareholder meetings are something different. And this document is intended to guide the operation of the corporation, not the operation of the shareholder. So I'm. Betting, my my guess would be that it's that that potentially. Should be a meeting of the directors of the corporation, maybe. So we can check that with with our legal. And. It may be worthwhile having a bit of a discussion here. About. Council's expectations. Of whether or not the meetings of the board of directors. Should be considered public meetings. And I would say that would be. Quite uncommon for private corporation. And somewhat contrary to the intent of the corporation, it's intended to be. Fully owned by the municipality, but independent municipality. And to be able to operate like a business. I think it would be unusual to find a. Meeting of a business board of a corporation that would have public meetings that anybody could attend. So. We can maybe have a little bit of discussion with our legal council about about that. And I would want to ensure that I have a good sense from councils that if that's. That met what your expectations would be. Certainly any of the fundamental issues related to the board or the operations. That the municipality would have influence in, not through the management shareholders agreement, would all come through council. And so any of those material decisions about the. Yeah, about about the operation would come through council, but the board of directors do need to be empowered, you know, with certain. Delegated authority to run the affairs of the company as they see fit. And. In a corporate context, those wouldn't be public meetings. So it's a bit odd to have a thing to say when you wouldn't have a public meeting, but we're talking about the board of directors, because. I think generally, meetings of the board of directors aren't public meetings, it wouldn't be in any corporate context. So if there's any other different sense, if there's somebody on council that said, well, every meeting of corporation needs to be a public meeting. Better that we know that now and have that discussion now. Than missing that expectation later on, because as I'm reading this, I would almost be going back to. Brownlee and say, there's not a need to define. Well, the board of directors meetings. Probably shouldn't be held. But the shareholder meetings and direction from the shareholder to the corporation will always be public, just to just to make that absolutely clear. So I don't know if there's any discussion on that point. I know we're getting a little bit, a fair bit of technical matters, but there's some fundamental principles here that hopefully council can engage in.
Counselor Gollan.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. The minutes of those four meetings, would they be made publicly, council would want to.
We can see some feedback. From Brownlee. I would say that it would be. A typical. Again, and I'm really just going for, you know, I can't think of. Corporations. That have shareholders that release the minutes of their meetings to the public.
Would they be released to the shareholders?
Well, so I think that's something that we could, you know, as the shareholders, the single shareholder, you could provide direction to the board. About what level of engagement and information you as the shareholder expect from the board that you empower to operate the company behalf. The municipality will have these two representatives on the board, and so there's one conduit for information. If council had an expectation for. A different level of information more formalized, I think that you, you know, we can work with. Council and ultimately the board to figure out what that should look like. But I would say that there's nothing, there's nothing in here that prevents. Council from having access to that kind of information. We'd have to think about what the process is and how we can. Codify that, write it down, so everyone understands what it looks like. This can be a challenge in municipally controlled corporations. Because corporation is under the act that is formed under a company, and it wants to operate like a company. Where the elected officials and the shareholder of municipality or municipalities. Are public bodies and they expect to operate like a public body, and so clarifying the expectations of how often. And what type of information will come back will be really important as we go forward, but I don't know that there's a requirement for that to be in the. Now shareholders agreement, that's the direction the shareholder.
If there's any questions, further questions? Thoughts on motions? Solutions?
Yeah, that, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. So I I appreciate counsel that there, there's a lot of stuff here. And maybe I'll just take us back to. To Elche's report that that summarizes the intent of the different sections. So the first three resolutions, twenty four dash one to twenty four dash three. All have to do with the shareholders agreement. I would suggest that. The committee could recommend council. Consider. Resolutions twenty four, sorry. Twenty twenty four dash one to twenty twenty four dash three, the national shareholders agreement. And I'm saying, consider, that would allow administration a little bit of time to work with legal between now and next week, which is not a lot of time, but. We can see if we can make those updates in time for it to come to council, regular council, and at that time, council could, we can present what changes, if any. So not asking you to make amendments. You've raised some issues, we'll take those issues back. And hopefully, I'll be able to bring that for you next week with the others. Dash four is the election of directors. We need to make sure that we actually take that step. It says that the people that were on the J C H C before and that, you know. And the corporation is set up are recognized as directors of the corporation back then. Dash five. Is the corporate bylaws, which is again that procedure bylaw for the the corporation. Dash six is acknowledging that the directors did something in the past, and as a shareholder, we're acknowledging those things. And then dash seven is the updating of the directors to match what council approved in its organization. So that's a bit of a shortened summary, it doesn't sound as though there's any debate with any, or not that there's any debate, there's guidance that being given. But it doesn't sound like there's any issue with any of the other items. So I think council can feel comfortable, the sort of committee can feel comfortable recommending council approve. Dash four, dash five, dash six, dash seven. Maybe it would just be that. Council consider. Dash one, dash two, dash three, and that would give administrations some time between now and council meeting to make those updates and show you the difference. There's mine. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, I I agree with all of that except for. Dash five, which is by law one, which I think we need to look at that. Change potentially to four point zero nine. Either eliminate it or change it. But otherwise, I. I fully agree, and I, it's not my intent to slow this process down, so I would be prepared to. Vote in favor of committee recommending council. Get on with it, with the hope that next week. Legal counsel has had an opportunity to look at these suggested changes and. Or something different for final point of council.
So maybe, or if I can just, because I'm not sure, you know. The committee recommend council get on with it, this is the way we want to show up in the minutes, so maybe it would be that committee recommend council consider. The following shareholder resolutions, all of them. And as administration will take that as a bit of time, so moves it forward. Still gives us time, you know, you're not making specific amendments, we've heard the amendments that we maybe need to consider, we'll go away and do those, and. If we have a revised version presented to you next week, then we can show it to you at that time. But keeps all of them moving forward without having to deal with them one by one.
I'm content to make that motion. You see, you've got it, get on with it, that's.
Journal, hit the motion.
Yes. That committee recommend. Council. Approve the following shareholder resolutions. After consideration of. Amendments. Discussed at the committee of the hall on February thirteenth. Including resolutions twenty four. Twenty twenty four, one through twenty twenty four, seven.
Counselors, speak to the motion. Understand motion, call a question, all in favor? Unopposed? Motion carries. Is that all you guys need from us on this topic today?
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate coming to us. Moving on to item seven point five, Community and Economic Development Fund Policy Review.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. We're bringing forward a recommendation for an amendment to. Policy B one one seven, the Community Economic Development Fund Policy. This is really to correct a administrative oversight. The last time this policy was discussed, council provided some. Amendments that they wish to see incorporated into the policy. That went through the committee to council process, the policy was written up with some, with the amendments. And was approved by council. Unfortunately, there was one amendment. That wasn't written into the policy that was ultimately approved by council. And that was essentially the the making prohibiting organizations. That have already received municipal funding through the budget process from receiving funding under the Community Economic Development. So that was discussed at committee, and you'll see a bit about the notes from the meeting, there was a motion that was passed on that. There was a separate motion that was passed with other. Amendments, and we processed the three or four other amendments, but missed incorporating. The first one. And so administration caught that as we're heading out to begin advertising for the for the fund. And we wanted to ensure that when we were advertising for the fund, that the policy that was on the website accurately reflected the direction that was previously given. So we're recommending that committee. Our recommendation from administration is that committee recommend council amend the Community Economic Development. Development Fund Policy B one one seven as presented. And in the attachment, you'll see the highlighted section that was over.
Counselors, any questions? Motion?
I I move that committee recommend council amend the Community and Economic Development Fund Policy. Be one, one seven as.
Thank you for that, counselors, any comments, questions to that motion? I understand the question, I'll call the motion, I'll call the question, all in favor? None opposed, motion carries? We're on to item seven point six, childcare space creation funding advocacy request for decision.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Council will remember that not all that long ago, January twenty fourth. Committee. Received a presentation from administration on childcare advocacy. And this is related to one of the items in that approached advocacy. And this is related to one of the items in that approach to advocacy that committee reviewed and endorsed. Again, I think just hasn't completely gone through the council process yet. But specifically related to capital funding to support the creation of new childcare spaces. Currently, the Bronx Alberta does offer a space creation grant in the amount of five thousand dollars per space. For already licensed childcare facilities and six thousand dollars per space for new licensed facilities. This amount, as counsel can well imagine, just accurately reflect the actual capital cost of creating new physical spaces. In contrast, the government of British Columbia. Does have a space creation grant, they call it the Childcare BC New Spaces Fund, which provides up to forty thousand dollars per space created. Which is more reflective of the actual market costs required to create physical space, obviously we're not creating these spaces one at a time. But to create, you know, space for twenty children, you would need a significant amount of capital, and a BC program does offer that opportunity. The approach recommended here and previously brought forward through committee was. Counsel endorsing a resolution or a request for decision to the Spring Alberta Municipalities Leaders Caucus. So Alberta Municipalities is the advocacy association for urban municipalities, as council well knows. They have their annual convention where there are a number of resolutions, as Jasper has taken resolutions at convention in the past. And have been passed successfully. But it is not the only opportunity that a municipality has to get an item on the. Radar of Alberta municipalities and ask for their support and advocating for position. Municipalities can also bring resolutions to the municipal leaders caucus events where they're voted on by the members there. And then if they're passed, can be incorporated into sort of the work of Alberta municipalities in terms of advocacy. And so that's the recommendation in this report. That committee recommend council support submitting the attached request for decision to the Alberta Municipalities Spring Leaders Caucus. The Spring Leaders Caucus will be happening. Continue to have that in the report in March. And this would be the first opportunity to get this issue in front of Alberta municipalities and ideally get support from the members that attend the municipal leaders caucus. So that it could be integrated to Alberta municipalities advocacy efforts. Attached, you'll find information on the Childcare BC New Spaces Fund. Including their frequently asked questions and then also a flow chart to show, you know, the different streams. You'll also see the. Member request for decision form, this is a standardized form that Alberta municipalities used, we've. Submitted the documentation that they asked for, and that would be the document that council would be approving to be submitted. Have answered any questions, Deputy Nelson? Thank you for that, counselors, questions?
That's a question.
I'd be happy to make that motion. That committee recommend council support. Submitting the attached request for decision to the Alberta Municipalities Spring Leaders Caucus.
Thank you for that. There's no questions or comments, I'll call the question, all in favor? You're none opposed, and motion carries, you. Okay, motion action list, agenda, I'm gonna meet.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, so I think that there are a couple of items that can come off and one update. So first, there was an item. At the bottom of the list, House of Arts Administration is recommending to defer that to March twenty twenty four, so. That's just a moving forward. The next item is the Tourism Jasper Destination Stewardship Plan. There was previous direction given, and that's been done here today, so that one could come off. And then the other, that I guess I would just provide a bit of an update on is the Crisis Team Jasper Society, just from the last meeting. We heard the presentation today, I would expect that administration have that conversation with. The society. An attempt to provide some clarity about what was previously approved or what directions previously given at the last committee of the whole meeting. And certainly the conversation will be focused on developing an F one oh four agreement and expected outcomes and deliverables for the twenty twenty four dollars. Because that's the one that hasn't yet been endorsed by committee or council. When we have that, then we would bring it forward to council for consideration. I believe that's all the items that we needed. That we could remove or provide updates on today.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, and. Three units to give, and let me just have a date that needs to be revised. It is the last item regarding a crosswalk near school zones. We have a May twenty twenty three date, I think the intention is May twenty twenty four. Or it could be another month, but anyway, for sure it'll be twenty twenty four, I'm just making sure that. Whatever was in that slot, we wanted it to be May of twenty twenty four.
Yes, thank you for the catch, we'll absolutely get that. The other one that might be worth a bit of discussion, as I'm just reflecting on the list, is the paid parking correspondence, so. Back in July of last year, there was a resident raised the issue of. Resident in Pay Park along Geeky Street, and so. Before council finalizes its discussion on the pay parking issue, I'll just ensure that our admin team has a bit of a look back at what that specific request was. And so we can provide an update to council. At the upcoming council meeting where you'll consider the paid parking recommendations from committee. We would want to ensure that we got some guidance on that. Before establishing the program parameters, we want to ensure that we get the program. Parameters locked down as early as possible, and so we will bring that back, and we'll see if we bring that. We'll bring back information before council deals with the other items that came from.
We have a motion to accept the motion action list. Those are coming, coming, thank you, all in favor? None opposed, some motion carries. Agenda item nine, counselor upcoming meetings. Counselors.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Two meetings coming up, or two items coming up tonight, there is a monthly meeting of the Jasper Yellowhead Historical Society, I'll be. Attending, and there is also a training session on Thursday. As it relates to community futures, West Yellowhead and operating as a board of directors member. And I think that's all I've got in the next months.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
I have an evergreen meeting coming up, and we have a fundraising meeting tomorrow for the general.
Counselor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. This evening I will be attending a library board meeting, and next Tuesday morning we will be having a legislative committee meeting.
Counselor Waxer.
This evening I'll be attending the refocusing Alberta's healthcare system community consultation session. And tomorrow I'll be attending the. Community Conversation for Children's.
For that, yeah, so Community Conversation for Children, Adults and Seniors. Or not seniors, this child. Anything to add, Marilyn?
I will be attending a Jasper coin committee meeting. As soon as we conclude here. The. West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Association meeting tomorrow at. Microsoft Teams. That's about it for this week. And thank you, Counselor Waxer, for confirming your attendance tonight, that was very short notice. Appreciate that you're early to go, the Minister of Health was in town. It's a company to know, I'm pastor, so thank you.
Thank you. Upcoming events on the agenda, we have the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce General Meeting, seven thirty, February twenty first. And we get cut. Old side of the year is February twenty fourth at the Jasper Committee for the Center for Seven. Strategic Priorities Review, February twenty ninth to March first at Pyramid Lake Lodge. And that brings us to an in camera item regarding the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation Director's election, and it's in camera due to FOI. Just looking for a motion to go into camera. From Counselor Caler, I'm be all in favor? Opposed, carries? We may come out of this with decisions, so with one decision, I think so.
That's, that's right, I think that, you know, the general nature as that we're discussing director appointments for the Jasper Pleasant Corporation. If council satisfied with the information that's discussed in camera, you may be in a position to come out of camera and make those appointments. If that's the case, then we would resume the council meeting recording, and this would be on the on the additional, that recording for public information, and of course, would form part of the minutes of the. Thank you for that.
Okay, welcome back, small amount of business to take care of, counselors, are there any motions? Mayor Island?
I would make the motion that committee direct administration to follow up with. Identified applicants and report back to committee of the whole. Or council. Report back to to council. First opportunity.
Call a question, all in favor? None opposed, motion carries? That brings us to the end of the agenda today, for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Caler, thank you, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.